Award of Trustees, roll call please.
Trustee Wojkowski.
Here.
Trustee Bonucci.
Here.
Trustee Lamb.
Here.
Trustee Urachek.
Here.
Trustee Rassich.
Here.
If we could rise for the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Presidential comments?
I have a number of them this evening. The first one being, I'd like to welcome and introduce Deputy Chief Lou Jorgman of the Park Ridge Police Department. He would like to make a presentation of a traffic award on behalf of the Illinois Chiefs of Police Traffic Safety. And if you'll talk right into one of the mics, Chief, it'd be delightful.
Thank you, folks, for having me. Appreciate it. Again, my name is Lou Jorgman. I'm Deputy Chief up in Park Ridge, Illinois. If you've ever flown in and out of O'Hare, you've probably flown over me at some point in time. And I also serve as the Chairman for the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police Traffic Safety Committee. And I'm here tonight to bring your attention to and to recognize Plainfield for the fantastic job they did in one of our events that we have in September called Illinois Rail Safety Week. So I'll give you a little bit of a quick background as to what it is, just so you know what you're being recognized for. In order to raise public awareness about the dangers associated with railroad crossings and railroad property, the Traffic Safety Committee for the Illinois Chiefs worked together with our Governor's Office, Operation Lifesaver, and numerous railroads, as well as other public and private entities, to have September, the week of September 14th through the, I think it was the 21st, named as Illinois Rail Safety Week. In 2014, it was our first endeavor to do a statewide rail safety week geared towards bringing people's awareness and attention to rail safety. So last year was our second year, and Plainfield participated in both endeavors. During last year's initiative, a total of 392 agencies statewide participated, almost 400, so we're really happy about that. During the course of that week, we had 1,454 hours dedicated towards educational efforts. And to highlight some of the educational efforts, nearly 100,000 posters, flyers, banners, and signs and other handouts were distributed across the state. 210 press releases were issued, and about 158 Operation Lifesaver presentations were given, all geared towards educating folks on rail safety. In terms of enforcement, we logged 2,700 hours, and about 1,200 citations were issued, along with 1,700 warnings. These citations and warnings were issued to both motorists and pedestrians who were walking across the tracks when they shouldn't have. We did this because, you know, the Illinois Chiefs Traffic Committee was looking for a project, something that we could sink our teeth into, an area that we thought was problematic in the state. And unfortunately for the state of Illinois, each year, we're either second or third for fatalities across the state for trespassers or people who are crossing the gates when they shouldn't. So it is a big problem, and I think a lot of people take it for granted. You know, it's pretty straightforward. You just don't cross, you know, when you shouldn't, and you'll be fine. But we're not doing a good enough job of getting that message out. So we started this, and I have to tell you, Plainfield has been one of our flagship departments throughout the state. You should be very proud of your agency. Our level of success over the last couple of years wouldn't be where it was without agencies like Plainfield. The Plainfield Police Department dedicated more time to Illinois Rail Safety Week than just about any other of the 392 departments. They dedicated about 101 hours, which is just incredible. The effort put forth by the Plainfield Police Department during Rail Safety Week was exemplary, and it personifies the message for which Illinois Rail Safety Week strives to deliver in order to prevent injuries and save lives along the rails. That said, currently Illinois is being looked at as a model. Our program is being looked at as a model to do a regional effort this year in 2016, and the FRA is looking at us to do a national effort for a Rail Safety Week, a National Rail Safety Week, based on what we've done here in Illinois. So we're very proud of it, and we really couldn't have done it without agencies like Plainfield. So again, I'm here today to recognize your agency. You should be very proud of them. We're presenting three of these awards statewide, and you're receiving one of them. So for us, it's --
-- Department worked hard. I'd highlight Sergeant Munson's work, too. He's on our committee, and, you know, I have to say that his enthusiasm and his work ethic kind of runs through the veins of the committee. He's a really integral part of this. So very proud to have Eric as someone who's worked with us. And I will read the award to you.
So it's a 2015 Illinois Rail Safety Week Award of Excellence presented to the Plainfield Police Department. The Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police, which has thanked the Plainfield Police Department for their continued support and for their participation in the 2015 Illinois Rail Safety Week initiative. The Plainfield Police Department's performance in the areas of enforcement and education far exceeded the performance of each of the other participating agencies. Your department's commitment to rail safety is to be commended. So again, we can't thank you enough. You should be very proud of your police department. They did a great job. I'll present this to whoever would like to come up and take it.
Eric's got to come up.
Eric.
Eric's got to.
That's all right.
Eric, you're the one that's going to have to give the speech.
Thank you. I'll give the speech.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I'm going to add your word. Those were the words.
As I said before, if the police department keeps getting awards at this rate, we're going to have to build a new display case out in the foyer of the police department, so. I have a --
-- without your support.
Oh. Thanks, Sarge. I have a couple of proclamations. The first one is a proclamation for safe digging in the month of April. Whereas April 2016 marks the ninth annual National Safety Digging Month, remind homeowners and professional estimators in Illinois to call Julie Incorporated at 811 before every digging project. This call is free and is service. Whereas notifying Julie and observing safe digging practices can reduce incidents and repercussions of striking an underground utility line, including costly today's environmental or property damage, liability, personal injury, and even the loss of life. And whereas Earth Day and Arbor Day are excellent opportunities for residents in our community to give back to the environment by planting a tree or participating in other beautification projects, but it is imperative to notify Julie at least two business days before putting a shovel in the ground, regardless of the size or depth of the project. And whereas the Village of Plainfield reminds homeowners of four steps of safety. Number one, call Julie at 811 before you dig. Two, wait two business days, respect the marks, and dig with care. Whereas Julie call centers agents are available to receive and process and locate requests 24 hours a day, seven days a week, at 811, and convenient self-service open line options are available at illinoisonecall.com. And whereas the Village of Plainfield is a proud member of Julie and thanks the non-for-profit organization for servicing 1.5 million requests annually, and congratulates the staff and members of the community for following safe digging procedures throughout the year. And now therefore I, Michael P. Collins, Village President of Plainfield, on behalf of the Village Trustees, do hereby recognize April 2016 as Safe Digging Month, and Plainfield encourages residents and contractors to all call Julie at 811 before digging. And I believe we have a couple of representatives.
Thank you, Mayor Collins.
Yes.
On behalf of Julie Inc., I'd like to thank you for supporting Safe Digging Month. This proclamation shows just how strongly you feel for safety for you and for the residents of Plainfield, because we know that safety is everyone's responsibility, and we thank you for supporting us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And you call what?
811. You can call 811. Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes.
Would I be able to get a picture with you?
Oh, of course.
I'm sorry.
That's good.
I would appreciate it.
I'm not as fast as the sergeant.
Oh. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We have another. Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting trees, and where this holiday, called Arbor Day, is first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce erosion of perilous topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable source, given us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore I, Michael P. Collins, President of the Village of Plainfield, do hereby proclaim April 29th is Arbor Day in the Village of Plainfield, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support the efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the heart, and promote the well-being of this and our future generations. Dated today, 18 April 2016. I have one that we're going to summarize. It's a proclamation for the promotion of rain barrels. If you'd like further information on this, contact Jonathan Prue. But it's, in essence, it's to save rainwater from washing off buildings in storm so they can avoid damaging and overwhelming our storm water volumes and our national waterways. And it's also a wonderful thing to save the water from natural, to put on your plants around your house. I'd like to brag a little bit about our staff. On April 14th, the village submitted an application for a federal grant to fund and help support 143rd Street Extension. This new grant entitled Fast Lane: Fostering Advancements in Shipping and Transportation for the Long-Term Achievement of National Efficiencies is part of a recently approved federal transportation bill. We are pleased to report that the following people and organizations have provided letters of support for the 143 -- 143rd Street Extension. Senator Richard Durbin, U.S. Senator Mark Kirk, U.S. Representative Randy Holgren, Pace, Plainfield Chamber, Illinois Road and Transportation Builders Association, Illinois Trucking Association, Illinois Ironworkers, and Illinois Asphalt Paving Association. And additionally, by the end of the month, the village will submit a grant application for federal funding under the Tiger Transportation Investment Generating Economic Recovery Program. And we are pleased that Senator Durbin and Representative Holgren have already approved letters of support, and we anticipate that several additional letters will be submitted within the next two weeks. On behalf of the village, I wish to thank all the individuals that provided the letters of support for this important program. And this is just for the citizens, to let them know that the village is not marching in place, that we are trying to move forward with some of our projects, and this has proved positive of that effort. And then the last thing I have is strategic planning community meeting. Please join the village board for the evening of visioning and strategic planning on Wednesday, May 4th, from 7 till 9, at Plainfield High School Cafeteria, 24120 West Fort Biggs Drive. The village adopted a strategic plan in '13, and it's time to update that plan. As we begin to grow in the village again, we want to hear your thoughts and ideas and help us on the course for the Plainfield's future. To register, please visit the village website, www.plainfield-il.org. And it's very important, I think we had over 50 last time participate in '13, and I would like to see more, because this way you have your voice in what their vision of Plainfield is, and that's all I have.
Trustees' comments?
For those of us that moved here after there were more high schools, Plainfield High School is Plainfield High School Central Campus. Sorry, boss.
Trustees' comments?
That's where he went.
Trustees' comments?
I just have one in regard to Mayor Collins reading not a proclamation but a discussion of 143rd Street Extension. You know, it's really important to hear all of those valuable names from the federal, state, local, and all of the support for the 143rd Street Extension. But in order to get their support, they had to be notified, and I'd just like to give, obviously, a little extra credit to our administration and to our staff, all individuals, and I know I can't name everybody because I would be remiss in skipping someone. But the whole fact is, we have to contact them. We have to work on it and get it, and have perseverance, which I know our staff has, and we're moving very far, fast forward, because unless 143rd Street Extension is done, we have to get the trucks out of downtown. We've got to get them off Route 59. They're choking the Village of Plainfield. They have been doing it for the last 10 years. So it is a priority, and thank you, staff. And also, I know probably many people from the federal level are listening to this board meeting right now, but thank everybody for your efforts. One last comment. Unfortunately, Eric and Deputy Chief Jorgman left. You know what? An awful lot of people, we always have rail safety, but you know, one thing that's never emphasized in rail safety is we have no texting and talking on a phone while you're driving, okay? That's against the law. You have to, but there's a particular thing that disturbs me. If you go near a commuter station anywhere in the Chicagoland area, the majority of people are walking with headsets on, and an awful lot of people, and I mean a large number of people, are struck by trains when they walk across the railroad tracks because they haven't heard the train coming. They got headsets on. I would just wish, if there was ever some publicity in the future, to give that particular notice out. Take the headset off, because if you've got smashed punkins on your headset, or whoever they are, some wild radical group, you don't hear the train whistleblowing, okay? So just my caution. Thank you.
Are there any other trustee comments?
I've got a couple. I like to, I won't repeat what Trustee Rassich said about the 143rd Street, but it is impressive. I've been on the board for over 10 years now, and it was a high priority when I first got here, and I'm absolutely delighted to see the progress that we're making that finally will likely materialize, and thanks to all the great effort that's making it happen. But it's going to be exciting for Plainfield to have that happen, so looking forward to it. Other comment is tomorrow night is the end of an era. Chairman of the Planning Commission, Jim Sokoviac, retires, or is now reappointed at his request. He's been chairman of that committee for 29 years. An awful lot of the board members have come through that, so he's trained a lot of the village board members. But it's incredible to think town probably had 4,000 people when he first started. I know it was 5,000 or so in the 1990s, but he started in 85. And I first ran into him when we did the zoning ordinances, and he just finished the comprehensive plan update in 2005, and he was part of the update again. And he's been a very solid chairman for that entire period of time. Plainfield has changed tremendously, and all the growth that we have seen, phenomenal growth, the fifth fastest growing town in the country at one point in time, and he oversaw all that, and very professional, great expertise. He ran it calmly, some very long meetings, there's some people around the planning commission, you know, went sometime after 1 o'clock, but he held it together and did a fine job. So sorry to see him go, but he will leave a lasting contribution to Plainfield, because a lot of things he put in place will continue to benefit for, to us. So tomorrow night's is last night, and I wish him well. I've got to be thankful we had him as long as we did.
Are there any other trustee comments?
To that point, I don't want it to go unnoticed by Chairman Sokoviac. We actually will have a plaque presented to him at next Monday's board meeting, so I think there's something as well happening at the meeting tomorrow night, but you're absolutely right to bring it up tonight.
Thank you.
Jim also came to my office, and he had called me on the phone earlier, but he says I want to announce face-to-face that I will not be seeking a reappointment. And he says, but I certainly will stay for as long as it takes to get my replacement. So that just goes to show what kind of guy he is, so.
Just to add to trustee Lamb's comments about Mr. Sokoviac, I looked up and down the board. Ms. Bonucci was on the planning and zoning board. Trustee Peck was on the planning and zoning board. I was on the planning and zoning board, and trustee Lamb went to so many meetings, they thought he was on the planning and zoning board. But the one thing I'd just like to, you can truly, truly never appreciate unless you've been there, the dedication of that man, 30 years. I mean, going, some meetings, I can remember, the meeting would last, we'd break up at 12:30 at night, almost five straight hours went in the high point, and now it's starting to develop again and again. But some of those meetings, and he is a man of infinite patience, not discriminating in any fashion other than the truth, and he upheld all of the rules and regulations, and he will be very difficult to replace. And like I say, if you have an opportunity, attend the planning and zoning meeting tomorrow night for his special award, and then as a trust, as, he's not a trustee. You're like a trustee, though. You are a trustee person. But Administrator Murphy stated, we'll have a small celebration for him a week from tonight. Thank you.
Are there any other trustee comments? Now, this would be the time for public comments. There are no public comments, and we'll proceed with the business meeting. We're seeking a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda. Trustee Wojkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries. We're seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda to include minutes of the board meeting held on April 4th, bills paid and bills payable reports for April 18th, cash and investments, revenue and expenditure reports for March, and to authorize Randall Jessen, Superintendent of Public Improvements, the authority to electronically submit grant applications on behalf of the village for Fast Lane and Tiger grant opportunities. So moved.
On agenda?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve items A through D under the consent agenda. Trustee Wojkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 24201 West Ottawa Street. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to approve the site plan review for a proposed three-unit residential building at 24201 West Ottawa Street, subject to the stipulations noted in the staff report.
Here, if I may, give just a brief overview of the requests before the village board this evening. This is somewhat unusual in that, for a couple of different reasons, you typically wouldn't see a site plan review request for a project of this magnitude, just a single building of three units. In fact, that's the smallest project that would require site plan review. A single-family home or duplex can proceed directly to building permit. But the project that's before the village board this evening is related to a home that was damaged last year by fire and ultimately demolished due to the significance of the damage. So the petitioner is requesting to rebuild on the site of the former structure. The, does require site plan review in that it's proposed as three units, which is what was existing prior. Staff in the planning commission have reviewed and evaluated the case. There are a number of nonconformities that existed for the previous structure, primarily related to the setbacks along Ottawa Street and Fox River Street. And by our code, the petitioner is entitled to maintain those nonconformities in the rebuilt structure. So having analyzed the plan, the project does comply with the requirements of the zoning code when factoring in the legal nonconformities that are entitled to remain. The planning commission did review and made a recommendation to relocate the public sidewalk along Fox River Street to provide an enhanced length of the driveways. There are three driveways proposed. This would facilitate parking of vehicles in the driveway while not, kind of de facto by default, blocking the sidewalk. So the petitioner has agreed to that request and has submitted a revised plan that reflects a somewhat increased driveway length. So with that, staff and the planning commission do recommend approval. I know the petitioners here, should the board have questions, and staff as well. And that concludes the staff overview.
Question, Jonathan. At the planning commission meeting, I suggested that we have a revised plot, and we do. It looks to me we've moved the sidewalk a couple of feet at the most. I thought, I got the impression at the planning commission meeting that the sidewalks are going to be almost on the street. It looks like the diagram I've got says there's probably eight feet of parkway.
Correct. Yeah, there was some discussion at the planning commission. Staff identified a few potential alternatives, and the ultimate recommendation, I believe, resulted in a hybrid or combination. One option would have been a carriage walk directly adjacent to the curb, which is actually a condition that exists on the east side of Fox River Street, directly opposite the lot. There were, I believe, two residents who spoke at the planning commission meeting, and the input was in preference to maintaining a parkway. So in working with the applicant, staff's aim was to increase the driveway, the functional driveway length, while at the same time maintaining as much parkway as possible.
Okay. It looks like the diagram's giving you that, so that's good. Thank you.
Can you elaborate a little bit more on the ordinance that allows a legally nonconforming structure to be rebuilt?
So the zoning code identifies that any conditions that don't meet the requirements of the zoning code that are present at the time of its adoption, which in our case was 2006, can continue. And in the case of a structure that's damaged by, you know, a natural disaster and the like, can be rebuilt to continue those nonconformities. They can't be expanded, so if you were, say, had a deficient setback, you couldn't go closer to the road just because you didn't meet the current codes, but you could recreate what existed previously.
Okay. And is this the tallest building in the neighborhood, then? Or will it be? Because I look at the map, and it says, it looks like there's a residence to one side, and then the other side it says a two-and-a-half-story building, and this is a three-story building, right?
It's two-story. It's three residential units in parallel. They're not stacked. They're
Not three stories? Okay.
So in terms of the land use context, there is an apartment building to the west, zoned R4. There's a single-family home directly to the north. This is a single-family to the east, zoned R4, and a single-family to the south, zoned R4. So although there's an area of R4 zoning, which is a multifamily, you know, would correspond with a multifamily use, the primary structures in the area are single-family, with the exception of the apartment building to the west.
Trustee Wojkowski, are you finished?
Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I had a quick question. The intent of that actual ordinance, you had mentioned that it was in place in the event of there was some damage to the property, and it had to be rebuilt essentially. But I guess essentially what I'm asking is, and I'm going to stop saying essentially, the intent of that ordinance and that language, was it in place for a instance where the building was partially damaged and not completely destroyed? I guess where I'm at with this, if my car outside is demolished and I have to get a brand-new car, Audi's going to have to build me a new vehicle that is going to comply with today's safety standards, and a 2016 vehicle and not a 2006. So where I'm at with this is, other than the financial interest of the applicant, why would we allow somebody to rebuild something that is completely destroyed and allow, you know, things that are nonconforming to be grandfathered in this evening? That's my question for staff as well as the board. I'm confused.
Well, I can address the question with a few examples. I know it's a challenge for, especially in the downtown area. This lot is 7,600 square feet, so one of the nonconformities is that the lot size is below the village's minimum lot size.
Okay.
So if we required it to meet the standards of the So although there's an area of R4 zoning, which is a multifamily, it would correspond with a multifamily use, the primary structures in the area are single-family with the exception of the apartment building to the west.
Trustee Wojkowski, are you finished?
Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I had a quick question. The intent of that actual ordinance, you had mentioned that it was in place in the event of there was some damage to the property and it had to be rebuilt essentially. But I guess essentially what I'm asking is, and I'm going to stop saying essentially, the intent of that ordinance and that language, was it in place for a instance where the building was partially damaged and not completely destroyed? I guess where I'm at with this, if my car outside is demolished and I have to get a brand-new car, Audi's going to have to build me a new vehicle that is going to comply with today's safety standards in a 2016 vehicle and not a 2006. So where I'm at with this is, other than the financial interest of the applicant, why would we allow somebody to rebuild something that is completely destroyed and allow, you know, things that are non-conforming to be grandfathered in this evening? That's my question for staff as well as the board. I'm confused.
Well, I can address the question with a few examples. I know it's a challenge for, especially in the downtown area. This lot is 7,600 square feet. So one of the non-conformities is that the lot size is below the village's minimum lot size. So if we required it to meet the standards of the current zoning code, the lot would essentially be unbuildable. Another example is with respect to the front yard setbacks. You know, a standard setback would be 30 feet for a new subdivision in a, you know, an area that's outside of the downtown. Obviously, the lot sizes and the existing setbacks of some of the homes in the downtown area fall, you know, well below what a standard new subdivision development standard would be.
I bounce off trustee Peck's point. So if this is allowed because of a 2006 ordinance, but yet somebody comes in and buys the house right next to it, or the lot right next to it, wants to do the same thing, they're not allowed. Correct? Because it would be non-conforming at the time.
Well, so a legal non-conformity could be replaced. It just can't be aggravated or made more intense.
Even if the building's completely gone? Okay.
The thing is the footprint's exactly the same as it was before.
Well, I'll try and describe this, I don't think I did as well as at Plan Commission. I'll try and be a little more clear for the trustees this evening. The actual footprint of the structure that was there, so had the foundation remained, the applicant is not building the same footprint of the building, but the building is falling within the same setbacks that were present. So it's a more standard rectangular-shaped footprint, whereas the previous foundation had some jogs and ins and outs. So it's falling within the same setback parameters, but it has a.
Whole area about the same because of the change?
Overall, I think it corresponds to the previous area of the building footprint. It doesn't include that the previous structure, you can see here in the aerial photo, had a detached garage. The proposed building, it's all together, so there's some additional green space in an area where the detached garage had been located.
Okay. Safety items, is there anything that, you're talking about setbacks. Those are village ordinance-type things which are design parameters, not safety parameters particularly. Is there anything that's likely to change safety-wise in the building of these houses or is it likely to be even better than it was before?
I don't believe so. You know, I would invite input from Mr. Goska as our building official as well. The applicant intends to submit for building permit based on direction from the, you know, village board should the site plan review request be approved. I know the new structure would, you know, need to be constructed pursuant to a building permit and meet the current codes.
Current codes, not 2006 codes, but the current codes it'll meet. So it's actually going to be better than it was originally. Okay, thank you.
Do you have a copy of the ordinance? I didn't see one attached with the packet. The copy of the ordinance allowing this?
It's part of the zoning code. I could, you know, I've got the code here at my space. I could flip to that section and read that if.
I don't need you to read it off.
It's not an ordinance, that's a standalone.
Standalone provision?
It's encapsulated in the overall zoning code.
Any feedback from the public other than you said there were two speakers at the Plan and Commission meeting that had a couple of concerns that you feel were addressed? Has anyone else in the public notified the village they objected or had any other concerns beyond those two that you had mentioned?
I will state, I know there's definitely interest. This is a visible lot and given its proximity to Village Green and the nature of this requisition, this is not something we see every day. You know, having a structure that's, you know, demolished and damaged due to the fire rebuilt. So it's not a standard, typical project. I know some of the residents who live in the neighborhood do have an interest in what's constructed. And it's, you know, obviously it's your neighborhood. You're going to be interested in what's built next door or across the street or in the area.
But we haven't received any official letters of objection from neighbors or anything else that you're aware of?
No letters, but I can identify, I know I did skip over, kind of as opposed to summarizing my report. The structure will be rebuilt with, you know, hardy board and some wood trim and it complies with the village's requirements in terms of our residential design guidelines and so forth. So from that standpoint, it's, you know, complimentary to the neighborhood.
The downtown district does not, as a whole, follow all the guidelines. They're all basically grandfathered in because they were built a long time ago. Spaces in between houses and all that sort of stuff, so.
That's correct. I mean, the nature of a downtown is varied housing types. Everything from a, you know, single-family, smaller cottage-style house to, you know, larger apartment buildings and everything in between. So it's a variety of housing types and they all seem to function well.
Was this a house that was, at some point throughout the years, was converted to more of an apartment style? Was this initially a single-family home?
I believe so. I suspect it probably had additions over the period of time. It may have been prior to the current ownership, but dating back, you know, the original home most likely was single-family and then expanded over time.
Wouldn't be allowing it right now.
If you'd like to make a representation or answer any questions, you can step to the mic and just identify yourself and maybe if the trustees have some more questions, they can address them to you, sir.
Thank you. My name's Steve Weggie. I'm the, my wife and I, Paddy, are the owner of the property. And we did have the unfortunate situation where the building was totally destroyed. And so really I've been working with the Plan and Commission, specifically Mike and John, Mike Ergen and John, for the past eight months to come up with the design, you know, with their direction. We're following all the ordinances. I really feel like we're putting up a very nice property in downtown Plainfield. This is something that my wife and I looked to the future as one of our residences. And so we're following all the ordinances, building really a high-quality property in the community. And again, with all the direction, I'm, my property sits behind or in front of two and a half-story, six-unit apartment building that's on the same-sized lot. So I just want that to be heard. And I am zoned R4. So I just feel like we're trying to really work within the community and the guidelines, the infill guidelines, everything. And I believe that we've come up with a really nice property that'll help complement the community and that's our intention. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
The other thing, when you had mentioned the ordinance at the Plan Commission hearing, I don't know if you had an opportunity to listen to that meeting, but Chairman Sokoviac, who is the expert, basically said he remembered exactly when they instituted that ordinance and it was at the behest of people to try to make sure that uses that were non-conforming would come forward if people had multi-uses and things like that. They wanted to make sure that these people felt like they would be able to come forward. So that was one of the impetuses for enacting that ordinance. So he did, and it was very interesting, he was able to give us a little bit of a history on why that ordinance was enacted, so. Right. He bought it as a three-unit. It wasn't a single-family that was turned into it. It was already a three-unit when he purchased the property. And it looks, I mean, if you look at the building, it looks like there was maybe a structure at one point in time and then another part got added on and it looks like a garage got added on. And truly, the garage that's there, the building that's going to go in, is going to provide additional green space on that south side, okay? Right now, you can see that it's, there's not a lot of green space on the south side of the property. In reconstructing this, he's going to have more green space on the west side and on the south side than there currently is on the property.
That whole area I pointed out is going to be green space. So right now, that's concrete. And actually, behind the garage is all paved. So there's very little green space associated with this property. In the new site plan, you're going to have a beautiful three-unit property, just like there was. And there's going to be a nice side green space that's 33 feet long on the side of the property there.
And just to reiterate, Jonathan, the Plan Commission is unanimously supporting this.
That's correct.
I move that we approve the site plan review for the proposed three-unit building at 24201 West Ottawa Street, subject to the two stipulations in the staff report.
Is there a second? Motion fails for lack of a second?
Next item on the agenda is zoning code text amendment regarding public noticing. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to direct the village attorney to prepare an ordinance approving text amendments to the zoning code, modifying the public notification requirements for historic landmark and historic district nominations as outlined in the staff report.
And if I may, Mayor, just provide a brief overview of the request here. The zoning code identifies public noticing requirements in a few different places, most commonly for things such as special use requests, variance requests, annexation, request for annexation amendment and so forth. In addition, public noticing is required for any proposed local historic landmark or historic district. The noticing requirements are different between the two. And so the proposal that's before the village board this evening is to streamline and reference the same standards for noticing. The historic district and historic landmark noticing calls for providing written notice by certified mail to all abutting property owners and as well those within a 250-foot radius. In the case of a proposed district especially, this can encompass a large number of properties, which provides a practical issue of requiring, you know, substantial effort. And in addition, with certified mailing at approximately $5 per mailing, it does generate considerable cost, which oftentimes is incurred by the village. Given that the proposed landmark and districts are not onerous in nature and we feel that the public notice sign, as well as the public notice ad in the newspaper and notification to directly abutting property owners by sufficient notice, we think it makes sense to use a uniform noticing as identified for all the other planning cases, variances, special uses and things of that nature. The proposal has been considered by both the Plan Commission and Historic Preservation Commission and both bodies do recommend approval.
I move we direct the village attorney to prepare an ordinance approving text amendments to the zoning code, modifying the public notification requirements for historic landmark and historic district nominations as outlined in staff report.
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Wojkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Administrator's report?
None tonight.
Management Services report?
No report.
Engineers report?
No report.
Planning Department report?
I do have just one item this evening. It is the annual request on behalf of the local farmers' market organization to host their farmer's market. What is new this year is the proposed location, given that the location that's historically held it for the last number of years has been sold and is potentially required by the new property owner for the coming season. The organizers have identified an alternative location. This would be the rear parking lot of the Plainfield Plaza where Tischlers and Peter Ruby and other businesses are located. The property owner, property manager, has consented to locating the market there and Peter Ruby will be a participating vendor. So they're certainly on board with the location as well. The applicant has submitted her request. It's attached to the staff's memo here. Pursuant to the zoning code, the village board does have the authority to approve temporary outdoor uses and so staff and the applicant would be requesting approval to hold the farmer's market at Plainfield Plaza from June through September of the coming year.
Are there any comments or questions? Now we'd be seeking a motion.
I move we approve, we approve the annual farmer's market in the rear parking lot of Plainfield Plaza at 15420 South Route 59. It's a temporary outdoor use from June through September of 2016.
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Wojkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Building Department report?
Just the operation report. I'll answer any questions if anybody has any.
Public Works report?
Thank you. Just two items briefly this evening. The village has, if you'll recall back to the budget process and back to the equipment replacement program that was approved by the board a few years ago. We do have a one-ton dump truck that is in need of replacement. The replacement vehicle is a 1999 F-350, so it's 17 years old. Served the village very well and we will put it on reserve in the future if needed for a period of time, as long as it's in good condition. But we do have budgeted funds for a new one-ton truck to be used not only for snow plowing, but also for, to install shoulder, stone, for gravel, asphalt, to haul material for main breaks and things like that. So it's not just one purpose. And the budget was recently approved. This was included in the coming year's budget. And I know we're all thinking that it's April and snow season is a long ways away. But trust me, the earlier the better when ordering vehicles of this nature. So I would recommend to the board approval of this purchase from Rod Baker. And they provided a very comparable price to the state purchase price with a municipal discount. So with that, we, I would recommend approval.
Are there any comments or questions?
This can be used year-round, right? For various different things? So it's not just the snowplow, this is a multi-use vehicle?
That's correct. Gravel, mulch, asphalt, things of that nature, and even spoil material from a water main break or things of that nature. So it will be used year-round.
Okay.
Are there any other comments or questions? We'd be seeking board consideration of a motion to authorize the purchase of a 2016 Ford F-550 heavy-duty dump truck with snowplow equipment from Rod Baker Ford at the total cost of $75,743.27. So move?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Wojkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries.
And the last item that I have, and this is kind of fitting because we, the Arbor Day proclamation earlier, and actually Arbor Day falls on the Friday before the big serve. So within Public Works, we're planning on planting a tree on that day in celebration of Arbor Day. We've typically done that at one of our public schools and the public property and it's been a good event every year. And Mr. Countryman and the rest of the street department staff do an excellent job at that. The village has been a member of the Tree Consortium for over 10 years now. There are 37 communities within the Chicagoland area that belong to the Tree Consortium as well. And the consortium has provided thousands and thousands of trees for many communities. The advantage with the consortium is they provide very high-quality trees. They evaluate the trees and there are trees that are fitting for this area too as well. We didn't really utilize, we didn't purchase that many trees through the consortium up until we were dealing with the Emerald Ash Bore. And now we've been purchasing trees through the consortium, which is actually five different nurseries that provide this. The consortium is all filled with volunteers. We pay a minimal fee of $500 a year to be a member. It's one of those volunteer organizations. But the volunteer members do go out and find the best trees at some of the nicer nurseries within the area. Since we started utilizing this program, we provided over, the village has provided over 2,500 trees, replacement trees for our residents. We've had very positive remarks and feedback related to that. Last year was a record year. We provided just about 900 trees last year in one given year, which is outstanding. And I can give credit to the mayor and board. We are outpacing many of our neighbors related to tree replacement. And again, we get a lot of good positive feedback related to that. We're planning on, if approved tonight, this would be our spring planting, which is usually smaller, and then we'd have a fall planting, which would be larger. Typically, most trees do better in the fall, but there are certain trees that do very well in the spring. And out of these 210 trees, they are primarily oaks, hackberries and a few maples. And they seem, these trees seem to. And they seem, these trees seem to actually do better when they're harvested in the spring and then planted in the spring, and we've had good luck with the spring planting too as well. So, with that, we're recommending approval of two-hundred-and-ten parkway trees. It'll be planted throughout the community within the parkways as replacement trees at a cost not to exceed seventy-five thousand. That does include a one-year guarantee with a tree and all of the planted cost and educational material for all the residents as well. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions, but staff recommends support.
I have one question for you, Ellen. Oftentimes, this comes up, and I know you've answered this question in the past, but for just, to reiterate to the community, in what order, I know the, you know, the starkness, the loss of trees is really devastating to a number of our developments. In what order do you replant? Because people say, "How come I don't get a tree right now?"
Yeah, the, you know, the first couple of years that we really had this challenge to get the replacement trees and work through that program, and quite frankly, worked through the budget at the time, the lag time was anywhere from two to three years in that range. And we're down to, between a year and two years is very typical for replacement, and last year, we had taken down two-thousand trees. And we were able to replace some of those trees within a year from the time that they were removed with the previous year. So, these would be some of the properties that had removals a year and a half ago, and some properties that had removals a year ago. So, we're starting to catch up a little bit, and that's some of the positive remarks that we've gotten to as well, is that we've told residents, "It's probably gonna be two years." And then last fall, we were back, and it was only a year, and a few residents said we thought it was gonna be two years. Well, it worked out that way that the board was able to approve, and we were able to find some additional trees. So, we'll do our best to expedite that, but a good rule of thumb is a year, year or so for replant.
Thank you.
How many do we have left to plant?
Yeah, well, we actually have a thousand ash trees to remove, so we've removed about four-thousand trees. We're at twenty-five-hundred. If we do an additional total of thousand trees, we'll be at thirty-five-hundred. And there are some areas that where there were two ash trees and they were overcrowding the parkway, it will end up being one maple or hackberry tree or something like that, or a few that were planted too close to streetlights or stop signs, it'll be eliminated that aren't necessarily needed. So, replacements will range somewhere in the four-thousand range total. So, we're over halfway there, and by the end of this season, we should be about eighty percent there in that range.
On the trees, we, I know we're not planting ash trees anymore, but I certainly support getting whatever trees you can, the good quality, but can you get an itemization of what kind of trees we're putting in from the consortium maybe, and maybe give us an update every six months? We've put so many of these hackberries and oak trees or whatever. 'Cause I get the question a lot, you know, "What should we consider planting?", and I like to know what the village thinks is valuable, and gives us some idea of diversity. We wanna make sure we don't overplant ash trees again, and one way to check is to see what the numbers look like. So, if we can get that sometime in the future, that'd be nice.
Happy to do that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, Ellen, isn't there something on our website that speaks to the kinds of trees that we encourage residents to plant if they've lost a ash tree on their private property, so that we do get some diversity and that we don't end up with a monoculture of, I know a lot of people like maple trees, and so we're trying to encourage folks to not use those, and we've gone with some more creative recommendations, and that's, isn't that on our website?
It is, the information's on the website, we have a handout as well, but there were, you know, the population of trees within the community was about thirty percent ash trees. And placement trees, we've got actually ten different types of trees, many of them indigenous to what was originally here a hundred, two-hundred, three-hundred years ago with the hackberries and the oaks and things like that. So, some really good quality hardy trees are replacement trees.
And further to that point, while we do take suggestions and preferences from residents, we can't always give them what they've asked for so that we can spread that out. For example, I was the insufferable recipient of a buckeye tree, if I recall.
Yeah, and, you know, the Kentucky coffee bean tree is not, I'll be honest with you, it is not the prettiest tree the first three to five years, but after that, it is a beautiful tree. And so, but to break up and bring that diversity to help prevent, if we do have a future problem with insects or other disease, we'll have very good diversity for the future.
Ellen, I have a comment to make, no, it's not a comment, it's a question enclosed in a comment. I was wondering if anyone, our arborists, ever realized there's a possible correlation between Mr. Murphy's arrival in Plainfield seven years ago and the advent, and the outbreak of the Emerald Ash Bore recip, it did start in Michigan, and I was wondering, did our arborists ever put the correlation together and think that was a possibility, that with his goodness, that he brought also some of the ash with him?
There's just a natural progression of the bug out here too as well, and of course, we're seeing it in all the, all the communities around here unfortunately. And we hope that it doesn't spread further south because there are some beautiful ash trees when you get down into the Carolinas and other areas, and it's been devastating here, and we predict it'll continue to be devastating in other parts of the country.
I move that village board direct the president to waive bidding and authorize the purchase of approximately two-hundred-and-ten additional parkway trees from the suburban tree consortium at a cost not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars.
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich? Trustee Rassich? Thank you, that motion carries.
Before we go any farther, and since it's already been voted, I have one quick question on the stump removal. Where are we, have we started that this spring?
We have, and we're continuing through that process. Some of the stumps are contracted out as part of the contract, the trees removed by the contractor, and some are more in the village's court. So, we'll continue to work on that, and we'll keep the residents updated on our progress.
Thank you.
Police chief's report?
Yes, thank you. I have four items for the board's consideration and also the operations report for the police department. The first item is seeking board's consideration for the authorization to purchase yearly subscription for all the sworn police officers, Plainfield police officers, excuse me, for the Illinois monthly legal update and review. This is something that we've had in place since nineteen-ninety-three, and basically, it's an online class that each officer takes. It is exactly what it sounds like, just gives updates on not only Illinois law, but also federal law. And then at the end of each one, you take a test, and you pass, and then you get a nice certificate in your folder. It does cost, the total is six thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars, which breaks down to, it's a hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars per, yes, a hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars per officer. Are there any questions?
No comments or questions? We're seeking board consideration of a motion to authorize the purchase of yearly subscriptions for all the sworn Plainfield police officers to the Illinois monthly legal update and review from the Police Law Institute in the amount of six thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck? Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is for the board's consideration to renew the lease on our three motorcycles for two months. And the reason for the two months, normally, we would bring a twelve-month lease in front of the board. However, the dealership was bought out, and we are anticipating a increase from that dealership. The two-month, they, the dealership has said that they would extend the lease for two months, and this would allow staff time to get other rates from different dealers, and also to reevaluate the program. I've had an opportunity to discuss with the chief and the mayor about just looking at the program from a whole to determine if we still need three motorcycles, do we wanna consider cutting that down, do we wanna consider eliminating? So, that's all under consideration from the police department. Of course, there'll be a report back to the board. I'm anticipating and...
Are there any comments or questions? We're seeking board consideration of a motion to approve a two-month lease extension agreement with Starved Rock Harley-Davidson for three motorcycles for the total cost not to exceed one thousand dollars. So moved?
Or second?
The motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck? Trustee Rassich?
No.
Thank you, that motion carries.
Thank you. The next one is for purchase of six Zebra RW-four-twenty mobile printers with extended warranty. These printers would be used for the new E-citation ticketing that's being pushed out through Will County. These would be installed for the patrol division, the total purchase cost is six thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars. It's a one-thousand, sixty-four dollars for each unit. Mobile printers, as I said before, for the E-citations that will be installed in the patrol cars. And our goal is to get every officer trained on the E-citation, which makes it more efficient, not only the officers, but for, up for consideration.
Is there a reason, so you, the budget had twelve, and you're only asking for six? Is there rationale for that?
I, unfortunately, don't have an answer for you.
Anybody using, are any, is anybody, any officer in the Plainfield Police Department currently using any of these?
Yes, we've been, we were one of the first tests of it, of the E-citation, and we currently have about a half a dozen officers trained, and we're going through another training.
Okay, you're not finding any glitches with your local court dates versus the state court dates down in Joliet? I mean, I know the software was, there were times when the software was a little incompatible. Yes. Okay.
Thank you, John.
Are there any other comments or questions? Now, we're seeking board consideration of a motion to authorize the purchase of printers with an extended warranty and necessary components from IT-Savvy LLC in the amount of six thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars.
Question, question before we vote. Shouldn't we have the number of units in there, just, not just printers? Authorize the purchase of printers with an extended warranty? Doesn't say a number? In the motion.
Second.
Yeah. Okay.
But it's twelve in the other part of the report.
So, I think the motion would read with six printers. Okay.
Six for a total of... Looking for a second.
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries.
Thank you. Last on the police department's request for spending would be an intergovernmental agreement with the Will County Sheriff's Department for warrant pickup program. This was not in the budget, however, I've been told that there is, money's allotted for this. Am I correct, Jason?
At this point, there was nothing specifically budgeted for this purpose, but staff will monitor the budget throughout the year. The requested amount for, or the estimate, estimate that they're looking at is right around thirteen thousand dollars. So, from a budget perspective, we're going to keep monitoring the budget throughout the next fiscal year to make sure that there's no concern on the expenditure side, but staff's pretty confident that we can put this into the next year's budget. If we find that we need to amend something, it will come back to the board for approval of amended budget for next year.
Thank you. This came about through, took about a year and a half of negotiations through Will County Sheriff's Department for them to come up with a, with an agreement with not only the Plainfield Police Department, but other police departments in the county. They based it on a three-year study of the number of warrants that they picked up from those communities, and then they based the cost on what they estimated it to be, and they broke it down from there. So, for instance, Joliet, larger departments, Joliet, Boland Brook would pay much more amount. We kind of fall in the middle there for Plainfield and the number of warrants that we have, have them picking up. So, that's where the number has come from. We feel that it is a fair number, and that's why we're recommending it to the board.
As the board recalls, when this issue was brought up to us by Will County, we did take a look at options and alternatives to possibly do the program ourselves. We think that this is a responsive and responsible dollar amount that's being presented by the county, and the nice thing is, is the way that the agreement is written is the county has agreed to that dollar amount, period. So, no matter how we use the program, we do get to control those costs.
Commander, didn't we also have, buy a van or repurpose a van and have it wrapped?
Yes, that is correct, Mayor. That was taken out of asset forfeiture, if memory serves me, serves me correct, and we just got the van back about a month ago. It took quite a bit of time to get the equipment ordered, as far as just getting the equipment here, and then having it installed. So, we do have the transport van, we are still planning it, planning on utilizing it, we still have other transports that Will County, that we would be responsible for, just if we bring somebody back locally, sir.
If I recall correctly, back when we approved that van, it was because we were unsure of what Will County was going to do. They hadn't finalized their program.
That is correct also.
So, that being said, the old way worked as long as the Will County sheriff was agreeing to take the prisoner transports. We bought the van, which is an additional vehicle. Has the police department considered selling that van since we're going back, we're taking two steps back? We bought the van as more of an insurance policy against Will County not doing that.
I'm not sure if the chief has considered selling the vehicle. I believe that the vehicle was taken as a seizure, and then we had purchased the equipment. Plus, I guess that would be a chief's decision there.
Are there any other comments or questions? Now, we're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt resolution number seventeen-twenty-three, authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement with Will County for a warrant pickup program.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries.
Thank you, and the last is the operations report, if you have any questions.
Attorney's report?
I have no report this evening, thank you.
Reminders?
Okay, reminders, April nineteenth is a planning commission meeting, which is a reminder, as Mr. Lamb said, will be Jim Siskelbyak's last day. April twentieth, there's strategic planning at six P.M. at Public Works. April twenty-second, strategic planning at eight A.M. in the village hall. The twenty-fifth will be our next committee of the whole. Our next village board meeting will be May second, and we'll also have a strategic planning at seven P.M. at Plainfield Central High School off Fort Beggs.
We're seeking a motion to adjourn to executive session as permitted under the Open Meetings Act under section two, C-one, to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of employees or legal counsel not to reconvene.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Wajowski? Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich? Thank you, that motion carries.